Everybody. Ms. Colley, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Here.
Torenci.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here, thank you. We do have a public hearing at 7:45. We're going to try to get as much business done as we can before that time. At this time, I would like to make a motion to move to add to the agenda a very special ceremony, swearing in of one of our police officers tonight. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Sikora.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenci. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenci.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Chief Cody, can you take the floor, please, sir?
Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity. Tonight is an extra special night as you indicated. It's one of those nights where you get to see an department literally change. You see the face of the department change. You see people who have endured a lot to move through a competitive process, which was very close. Ultimately, we end up at a point today where a person is selected through that process to move into the rank of Sergeant. That individual today is Chris Bennett. Chris Bennett was hired into the Utica Police Department in 2015, graduated Macomb Police Academy. Upon being hired, Chris has always been a quick starter. He's always been very active, proactive, and taking on new tasks. As a result of his dedication and enthusiasm, in 2016, he was chosen to represent the Utica Police Department as a member of the Macomb County SWAT team. In 2020, he earned the distinction of Officer of the Year, and Chris Bennett has received two lifesaving awards. He was recognized by Mothers Against Drug Driving for his active and proactive actions for drug driving. Chris was selected to become a field training officer for this department for new officers and new hires. He's also become, more recently, one of our new firearms instructors. I supervise Chris since his hiring. I've seen his dedication to the city and this department, and he comes to work with a positive and energetic attitude. Through a difficult selection process, Sergeant Bennett has worked to achieve the rank of Sergeant. I look forward to seeing Sergeant Bennett bring disabilities to the department by leading, training, and mentoring other officers. I'm confident that Sergeant Chris Bennett will serve this department and its citizens with professionalism that we always strive to provide. I prophesy Chris to learn today to the rank of Sergeant. I would ask that Kerry, his fiancee, come forward. We'll move up towards the flag here for swearing in.
Just a brief comment from me. There's a lot of great things about being mayor of this city. But one of the best things is when you get the opportunity to recognize and reward folks that do a great job and make our city and our residents proud. So tonight, I love it. You know, I get that opportunity to tell you thank you for doing such a fantastic job for representing your department and our city with honor, with dignity. The Utica Police always make me proud in any conversation I have with other local leaders or, you know, residents. The Utica Police Department is always a source of pride for me because it's always good things that I hear. So I'll shake your hand now, and I'll shake it again in a minute. Thank you. If you could raise your right hand. Left hand, hold for a second. And put your left hand on the Bible. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. Or affirm. Or affirm. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. The Constitution of this state. The Constitution of this state. The Charter for the City of Utica. The Charter for the City of Utica. The rules and regulations. The rules and regulations. Policies and procedures. Policies and procedures. And the general orders. And the general orders. Of the Utica Police Department. Of the Utica Police Department. And that I will faithfully discharge. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of police sergeant. The duties of police sergeant. For the City of Utica. For the City of Utica. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. It's my pleasure to introduce you to our newest police sergeant, Sergeant Christopher Bennett. Congrats, well deserved.
Congrats.
Congrats, Chris.
And Sergeant Bennett will sign this after the...
Congratulations.
Chief, do you want to get him to sign it now if you think he'd like? Thanks, Chief.
Mayor Council, thank you.
Thank you. And we do have that public hearing in about six minutes. So moving... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. If anyone would like to be excused, feel free to leave. We're going to try to get Chief Cody out of here as early as possible so he can join you. You can stay if you'd like. It's very second stuff.
It's always fun.
Can I go?
Wow.
All right.
Yeah?
At this point in the meeting, we'd like to open the floor to anyone in the public that has comments for items that are listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to any item on the agenda? No? There's no unfinished business. For consent business, council members in your packet was all the information for the several items that are listed under consent business. At this time, we'll be handling all these items with one vote. If any member from council would like to remove any of these items from consent business, we could address them separately. And if not, I would be looking for a motion to approve all the consent business.
I'll make a motion to who the consent business is listed.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Ryan. Any discussion by council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenci.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you. We have no correspondence at this time. New business. As the first item is St. Lawrence Apple Fest, I'm going to move forward to the Red Barn mural. Mr. Howard Fritz, would you like to step to the podium and give us your name and address, please, sir?
My name is Howard Fritz. I live in the 10015 Keston. And I'm here with my friend Kathleen Hui, who is partners in Red Barn Nutrition Business. And they have asked me to paint a mural on the side of their building. And I'm... Did the council see?
Yes, it's in their package. Yep.
So I have more copies than anybody who wants to see. And it's a scene from Casey at the Bat, which I think is appropriate due proximity to the stadium. And it's a line drawing because that's how I transferred onto the wall. If it's approved, I... It will... I'll do a version in color and everyone can see. There'll be color and more detail. And I hope you like my idea.
Did anyone from council have any questions? I know... City Attorney, would you like to address that?
I mean, in the past, we've done different agreements, lease agreements with regard to the murals. If that's... I don't know if that's something council wants to continue in this situation or something you would consider doing if council so.
I'm not sure what it is.
If that's something council wants to pursue, it'd probably be best I could give you my card, and we could sit down, and I could review with you what we've done with regard to other murals.
I would propose that we make a motion to approve Mr. Fritz subject to a lease agreement as produced by the city attorney, Linda McGreal.
Similar nature to the past mural.
Right. We did one very similar on the WeatherTech Building right over by Shamrock in a similar fashion.
Okay, I'll take a look.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Ryan. Support.
Yeah.
Support by Councilman O'Donnell. Any further discussion by council?
Question. Do we want to pre-approve that without seeing color details the actual drawing, which we have seen in the past? We always had full-blown artwork that we got to see. I don't know if there's a stipulation. Do you move forward, bring it to September? If that all meets, have some drawings, and then we approve it? I'd like to actually see instead of just the line drawings. I want to see what the color rendering and everything's going to look like.
We could bring the actual contracts and drawings, I presume, if you can make that timeline to the September council meeting.
Sure.
Okay, so... Yeah, I think we need to correct that motion that we're not pre-approving. We're just...
You could just... I mean, you're not tabling. Tabling's indefinite, but postpone it to the September meeting. We can bring everything before council in September. But we do have a motion on the table so that would require friendly amendment by the mover and the supporter or withdraw and remake or however you guys want to handle it.
I will withdraw it, and we'll have it moved to the September.
And then we have a second that we'd have to agree to that.
Sure.
Yes.
Could that be a question?
Yes, sir.
So far, there are no objections.
I think we're basically discussing the... We're discussing the legalities of how we do it, I think, at this point, really.
I have a card for you, actually, if you want to reach out to me after. And then we can figure out what we need for the legalities of it.
So, Madam Clerk, for the record, Councilman Ryan withdrew his motion, and Councilman O'Donnell withdrew his support. How does that go?
So far, so good.
If there's anybody else since the public hearing, is anyone else... Is it a public hearing or just...
Yeah, I need to get the public here for St. Lawrence.
Okay.
We're all set, Mr. Fritz. If you'd like, Ms. McGreal's cards right here.
Matt, I wouldn't worry about tonight. Just send me an email or something, and we'll hook up soon, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
It is 7:45 at this time. We would need a motion to enter into the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Torenci, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenci.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you. Our public hearing tonight involves the St. Lawrence Apple Fest temporary tent use. Is anyone here representing St. Lawrence? Good night. How are you doing tonight, sir? If you could step up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Sam Sarah, representing St. Lawrence. The address is 44633 Utica Road.
Thank you, sir.
Looking for permission and field any questions for Gary. The festival this year is September 10th, 11th, and 12th. We're going to start like we always do, the day after Labor Day, which would be September 7th. And we will take everything down, basically, September 13th. That Monday, the tents will go down. So it's up for a week, Tuesday through Monday. Festival Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The hours are 5 to 12, 12 to 12, and 12 to 6. Both of them are a little early. Chief Cody, I left you a message today just to confirm that we are able to use you guys for the weekend.
Yeah, I think somebody's been in contact with your people because I know that there was some... I was out of town a little bit. There were some licensing things going on and...
That was me, but I took care of that. But I just left you a message today just to make sure that you guys are on board.
Yep, absolutely.
And then I guess I would have to communicate you for the ambulance, but we're here, same as always. Any questions?
So this is basically the same as we've done in the past?
Yeah, a little different this year. We're not going to have Vegas. So the school actually purchased... There is in the process of purchasing the Knights of Columbus Hall. So we're not going to do Vegas this year. And also, maybe because of COVID, you know, indoors, just didn't seem right. So we're not doing that this year. So it's a little bit of a scale down. But basically, everything else is the same.
Okay.
Beer tent, food tent. Maybe scaled out a little bit of the food. Bands are going to be there. Rides are going to be the same, hopefully.
Bingo?
Bingo, we're going to have, yeah. That'll be at the social hall. Yeah, I don't... You know, we're just keeping our fingers crossed with regards to, you know, mandates and stuff like that. But as of right now, you know, everything is technically outside except for bingo. So we're hoping that it works.
Do you still have access to the Knights of Columbus Hall?
Yes, we do.
Yep, because I know that it was part of the fall run plan.
Yeah, and even the weather.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will have access. You have the keys, right?
We should have access.
Yeah. Plus, we have plenty of room in the school church.
Okay.
We're basically going to close the whole school off, though. This year, we usually use the school for restrooms and stuff, but we're just going to keep it closed, but access if we need it.
Okay. There you go.
Signs. Are we making the signs like we normally do? I think so, yeah. We usually need one big banner, right? Why supply weed with the sign? What, but... I think we just do the one. Right at the corner. Yeah. That's the one you like? Well, I think it's... You know, we... Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from council? This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public here has a question about the St. Lawrence Apple Fest temporary tent usage? Chief Cody, it sounds like you've already talked to Mr. Sarah or...
Yeah, I think this is a very well-run, organized event. We've never had any issues there at all. And if there has been anything, it better just be anything. So we never have any issues with the St. Lawrence Apple Fest.
Excellent. Chief Wilson?
Same thing.
Same thing. All right. Well, we will be voting on this once we return to regular council.
Okay. So if you say no, it's fine, too.
A little less work for you, right? All right. I would be looking for a motion to leave public hearing and return to regular council meeting.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Sikora, support by Councilman O'Donnell. If there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenci.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. And that brings us to new business. And the first item in new business is the St. Lawrence Apple Fest. We've heard from Mr. Sarah. I think everyone has asked the questions they'd like to ask. If there's no further questions, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the St. Lawrence Apple Fest tent as presented as they have been doing for like 25 years.
30.
30 years.
Support.
I remember the first one, so I know how old I am.
35.
Motion by Torenci, support by O'Donnell. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenci.
Yes, and I'm a St. Lawrence parishioner.
O'Donnell.
Well, that's... We are supposed to do that.
For disclaimer, yeah.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Sorry. Deanne.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Sarah, I'm sorry. We weren't able to cut your workload down.
You sound so excited.
The next item in new business is a proposed lease at the locker room. And Liz Colley is here. You could step up to the podium and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Liz Colley. I'm the owner of the locker room. This is Mark Curry, general manager. So the area that we are using right now that used to be... That used to be part of Cass Avenue that we've been using for patio space.
Thank you.
We're proposing an eight-to-10-year lease to continue the use of the patio. I know there's a lot of plans about what you guys are going to do with moving the parking spots over and with putting in some trees and bringing up the street to curb the hole. We'd like to continue using that space. So with the eight-to-10-year lease, we plan on sticking around for a while, and we want to build it up and make it eye-catching for people from Hall Road. That way, the city can still have ownership of the property, but we'd be able to use it, and you guys can collect revenue off the space instead of the trees. We would handle all the maintenance and upkeep of the property as we do right now. I believe that if we built it up and made it look less of a construction site or more eye-catching, we could get more traffic into Utica, not just the locker room or from Hall Room. I... First page, we put what we're planning, what our hope is for the fencing. We'd like to build up brick blocks that could be for decor and then also keep our customers a little bit safer. Put it right on the corner where everybody makes that turn a little bit too sharp and put fencing around it. We'd also like to put plants on top of it, on top of the brick blocks. Second page, we'd like to build a fire pit that you can see from Hall Road, a little bit closer to Hall Road. I think that would really bring people in, something shiny and new when they're driving by. The third page, we would like to put up the shade sails. We get a lot of sun on that corner and I think it would make everything look really appealing. I attached kind of a diagram of all of it, the proposed lease area. And I kind of... I changed around how the plans that Mayor Calendrino showed us, where the parking was going to move over in the street, we're going to kind of flip-flop in the new sidewalk. So we've been getting a lot more families in, and I think that's because of the patio. We've been trying to clean the place up, open it up for daytime. We have a piano and a lot more things that the lunch crowd seems to like. We actually had Utica Shelby Rebels cheer team approach us. We had a meeting with them earlier, and they want to make it their home bar because there's the games out there for the kids. And as everybody here knows, Locker Room probably wouldn't have been approached by parents a couple of years ago. So it's kind of where we're trying to go with this, and we'd really like to use that space to keep going with this. We're getting a great crowd in there for lunch. We're getting a great dinner crowd. And we'd really like to use that part of the patio. Also, when we were talking, Mayor Calendrino and I were talking about the city, if you were to let us use the space, there possibly would be things like put up a big Christmas tree and whatever else ideas you have, possibly for bands or anything like that. We definitely, definitely would like to do that. Anything that brings in more money to the city and makes us look good to the customers and kind of changes the perception of the locker room. So anything that you guys are...
Anything that makes the city's good for us.
Yes, definitely.
And I did have a discussion with Liz and Mark in my office. I believe it's this week, last week, I believe. And they're aware that we're voting tonight to award a contract to do reconstruction on that corner. So I don't think you're looking to do this now, right? Because you're going to be in the middle of construction for a few months, for sure.
Well, that's another question we had, was like the timeframe on that. When you guys were planning on doing this.
Is there any proposed timeframe for when they would be breaking down? I don't give a chance to even vote on it.
Yeah.
But is there any? Just because of Utica Shelby Rebels, they want to come to us because of the patio area and having kids out there play and have fun and could dug out and lose like half of it. So we just need to let them move.
Mr. Lang, do we have... We don't really have a set timeframe yet. Because we haven't even voted... We haven't even awarded the contract to them.
Okay. No. Could be as early as a month from now.
To start would be to start. And it's probably, I would say, a month project at the minimum, right? At the most?
Because they said they have a three-month season, and they would start late August coming over. So I'm sure we can...
Up to 60 kids and their parents, so.
Wow.
Yes, five to 11.
Because what we've been going for...
Yes.
That's what we could have been trying really hard to get to, was that family kind of atmosphere where you are not ashamed of bringing your kids.
Yes.
Give them a lot of time to meeting and making things so that they would be comfortable coming. And that's a really big thing. Even if they decide to go somewhere else that they came and were willing to talk to us about doing it, it just made us feel like, in other words, pay enough, so.
Right. Any comments from council?
From a visual standpoint, if it was anywhere near as nice as what we've been presented, it would definitely clean up that corner, make it look attractive. I love the idea of maybe another city Christmas tree, something back in that corner just to light it up. Yeah, it's... This is what you plan to do. It's pretty special, so.
I think it'll really help with eyes coming down Hall Road there. You know, if they see the fire, you know, from the bonfire, I think that's going to make a world of difference. They're going to be like, what's going on in that city of Utica there?
I think your shade awnings will actually catch most people's eyes.
Yeah.
Because it's... They're big, they're bold. Because it's, they're big, they're bold.
Yeah.
And it's something totally different. Eye level is one thing, having it up and coming down, it'll draw them too, so. I like what I see, so.
I like what I see.
So from the proposed diagram, is this pretty much the same footprint that you guys are currently using out there right now? Or is it a lot smaller?
It's basically the same footprint. It's just from the understanding of the drawings that I saw, that you guys would be moving the sidewalk over to the other side and moving the parking to the other side. But basically spaced by.
In the sidewalk avenue.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, the question that I'm getting into is from, what is it, southbound traffic. The biggest, my concern as far as with the paver blocks, make sure that we will withstand the, be able to stop a car that's coming through there. Because that's honestly been my concern, even from what it is right now. For the Amazon truck, somebody not directly following the rules of the roads, be able to stop traffic from getting in through there. So that's my only comment, is making sure that those paver blocks are strong enough to hold, either not fit a car through or strong enough to stop a car.
Definitely, and that's why I put corners, corner blocks. Make it a little bit heavier duty right there, the other one. Lay down the corners where everybody makes those corners, even though they're one way. Makes those turns a little bit too quick. We'll make sure that it's heavy duty enough because right now, we don't, we don't have tables, what is it, probably 12 feet from that corner?
Yeah, I agree.
12, 15 feet? Yeah, probably like 15 feet. We don't try, we just see too much over there. Everybody's coming in way too hot in that corner, so probably the 15 feet that we do. This way, if we put something more substantial, then we know that they'd be safe and we can use the whole area.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Lang, it looks like they're going all the way to the sidewalk here where we're reconstructing, the red area. And I think the way HRC had bitted out this job, that was basically going to be, they weren't going to touch the paver stones, but where there's street right now.
Right.
That was going to be a curb on the far, right on the perimeter. But they're land, they just proposed landscaping, which I think, I would imagine, could be changed pretty easily.
Yeah, originally it was going to be grass.
Right.
I asked them not to do that.
Right, because then we have to cut it and water it and take care of it.
Just use a mulch and a little bit of plant material. So, I mean, from what I can tell, what they're proposing to do for what we're proposing to do, the space that's left should be massageable or if you want to use to accommodate something like what they're proposing. Because there's no, we're not putting, it's not concrete.
Right.
It's just all soft skates, grass.
Right.
So whether it was this fall or next year, two years from now, could be utilized for that. Or it's something you could actually phase into. Anyway, that's all I'm talking about, I'll do it. It's extended.
Right.
Yes. No, it's an investment.
So at this point, I think we're kind of in flux, not knowing exactly where we're at with, we haven't even, today, we're going to be, you know, voting on whether or not we're going to award that contract. So I don't really, I don't think we can move forward with the lease agreement tonight. Maybe, do you have another card you can give up? We're giving our city attorney a lot of work tonight. I would probably, I don't think we need a motion for anything. I would suggest you talk, set up some time with Ms. McGrail to discuss your plans and start getting a lease agreement together.
So we would just basically see what you guys decide on and then wait until that's.
Now we need to do a lease and figure out the dollar amount. And then I don't know if it would, if the actual plans would still need to go to planning.
Yeah.
And then, so, multi-step process.
Mr. Lang.
But being that that's road, we'd like to see that those lease dollars go to the road fund.
I bet our city attorney would like to see them go to our.
Technically, it's still a street. I mean, it's a share of our, part of the road system. We'll lose road funding because we're going to, we'll eliminate that.
Yeah, that is true.
So the lease money, ain't that it, was dedicated as street. You got to speak up at the, you know, the right time, so.
I appreciate that, you know I do.
That would just be my, you know, as my job as a street department, the street administrator, it would be my recommendation to ask for those monies to go to the street fund. Thank you very much.
Noted.
One thing I want to say, you know, we've watched you, and I think it's about two or three years now since you've taken it over, and you've just done such a wonderful job. And even when you come to us with plans, it's like, wow, you've really thought this out. And I'm really happy for you because I think about you and, yeah, we've watched you grow in all ways, so, good job.
Thank you so much.
And if anyone hasn't, you're going to start brunches again soon, right?
We're going to start brunch, and that's, yes, that's right, end of August?
Yes.
Oh, and Greg from the Rebels said that, let you know when there's brunch and reach out to him, you guys can brunch together.
All right. Yeah, if you haven't been to their brunch, it's fantastic.
Has some staffing shortages, but we're hoping end of the month, football season.
That's where we start brunches.
Everybody was too tired after closing on Saturday.
Right.
Well, hopefully, when all the free money stops in September, people will actually go back to work.
That's what we're hoping, that's what we're hoping. I think we had 15, 13 front of our staff and we went to four.
Wow.
Wow. Then all have other full-time jobs.
Yeah, that's been, that's been interesting.
Wow.
So I had to see if you guys had weathered this COVID storm, so.
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, thanks for coming out tonight. I think we have a path forward here.
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you.
We're going to hear it from you soon.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you too.
All right, department reports, I'll go first. First thing, I'd like to thank Utica Fire Department for participating in the American Legion Community Picnic on the past Saturday. It was a great event put on by the veterans at the Legion Hall. A lot of members of the community came by and our fire department represented Utica perfectly. It was a pleasure seeing a lot of the veterans and community folks approaching our fire guys and talking to them, and they had a lot of interest in the rigs. And we flew the beautiful flag. It was just a great day, so thank you to Utica Fire. Another thing I'd like to note is the Grant Park Walking Path is complete. Thank you DPW for all the hard work on that. It looks beautiful. 99.9% of the feedback I'm getting is fantastic. And we've discussed the 0.1%, and we're working on that, that small fraction. But it looks gorgeous and it's going to serve the residents of Utica for many years, so thank you, Mr. Lang. The gasoline alley, car show is this weekend. A new event that they added is a pancake breakfast at the fire department, so it's a great way to start the day. At the car show, the pancake breakfast goes from 6:30 to 10:30, is that right, chief? Maybe 11:30. It's on the website and Facebook. And there's a sign right outside, the fire department. That's sponsored by the Utica Lions, so it's a great cause. Anyone from the public listening, if you're looking for a nice breakfast and you want to help a great group that helps Utica, stop by the pancake breakfast on Saturday. We had our primary elections last Tuesday. Lori Cook, our new clerk, did a fantastic job in her first election. I actually ran into the Macomb County Clerk, Mr. Fellini, at the governor's luncheon. And he walked up to me and said, you know, I just want to commend your city clerk on what a fantastic job she did for her first election. We were the third community to turn in all our data. We surpassed a lot of cities, a lot of communities that are much bigger, much more established than us. So, thank you, Madam Clerk, fantastic job. Get ready for the, get ready for November. In your packet, you'll see a request from me for a new laptop for our cable broadcasts. We're currently using an Acer with an AMD processor. It's unbearably slow. Per some resident request, I added some text at the bottom of the cable broadcast, if you saw it either on cable or YouTube, which lists the date of the council meeting, because a lot of residents were confused, you know, what they were watching when they were watching it on either cable or YouTube. To process just putting the date at the bottom of the broadcast, it took the entire day after the council meeting. I literally finished it as I was leaving at like 6:00 PM, the Wednesday following the council meeting. So we do have PEG funds, which are public education government. They're from our cable franchise fees. They can only be used for capital expenses, is that right, Ms. McGrail?
Yes.
Capital expenses for cable-related type of things. We checked and this would be a qualified expense, so I am asking for, and I don't have my agenda opened. I would be asking for a motion to approve the purchase of that laptop, using PEG funds.
And then another motion?
$2,591, and I believe I included in your packet the estimate from SYO, who is our provider.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the laptop for the cable and how to visual work in the amount of $2,591.
Actually, Mr. Pateraster asked for the motion to be 2,600, just to cover the $9.
Okay, $2,600.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Sakura, support by Terencey, any discussion by council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne. Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it. It will make my day after council meetings much easier. And hopefully, we can even do some more nifty things with our cable broadcasts now that we'll have a little bit of processing power. Next thing I'd like to bring up is the DIA mural, just so everyone.
Sorry, there was a second motion to amend the budget. Should have been a second.
Oh, was there? Oh, you are right. On the agenda item summary, Mr. Pateraster included a motion is required to amend fiscal year 2021 general fund budget increasing by $2,600 each revenue account, which he lists, assigned fund balance, PEG fees, and expenditure account of video equipment. So I'd be looking for that second motion.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terencey, support by Mayor Pro Tem Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for picking up my slack as usual. The next thing I need to bring up is the DIA mural approval. I included a illustration of what is proposed for the fire station wall. We also had a, Councilwoman Townsend and I had a meeting with the artist and the support person, I guess, is her role?
Yeah.
From the DIA.
The facilitator.
Facilitator. She's, she's actually on staff at the DIA. We had a meeting with them on Saturday at Vinnie's Italian Eatery, went very well. They are actually, over there right now, in standby mode, waiting for us to text them if they get approved. Because they want to begin tracing the outline, they have a very aggressive schedule. If approved, I believe they said two weeks, right? Isn't that what they said?
What, in two weeks?
The whole, that they're basically going to.
I thought she, I thought she said she was going to be going into September.
Yeah, that may be.
After school, yeah.
But it's, whatever it is, it's a very aggressive sc, they want to get it done either.
They're aggressively doing the outline and the projection. It'll take a while for them to paint it.
And they, right, and they have a bunch of Utica high students that are going to do some of the production painting once they get the outline in place, if approved. In your packet, I included the artist statement, which describes, you know, what all the meaning behind her artwork is. She's a very qualified artist, she's a teacher at Davis Junior High, part of the UCS system. And I think it's going to be a really wonderful addition to our downtown, adding more color, adding more art. Trying to think if there's anything else as far as that goes. No, so I would be looking for a motion to approve the concept drawing provided by the DIA and to begin work on the mural.
So moved.
I support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Townsend. Is there any further discussion by council?
It's gorgeous.
I can see that middle flower with, it's hard to see in the black and white rendition, but there's like a metallic effect U, you know, for Utica, with these orange. I don't know what the flower is, but they're orange, so, you know, the Utica colors. I can see that becoming a big destination for people to take, you know, prom photos and stuff like that. So I think it's going to be a great addition to our downtown. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Is there a motion?
There is a motion.
Okay.
O'Donnell.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Councilwoman Townsend, would you please text our DIA crew over at the fire station? Our next, my next item of business is two Parks and Rec committee appointments. The first one is Ms. Lori Schmidt. She has been one of the main forces in getting the Utica Community Garden going at Pioneer Park. She has endless amounts of energy and. I'm sure she's got a lot left for Parks and Rec, right?
Absolutely.
But she really loves Utica, she's been a great ambassador, meeting people, meeting residents as they come to Pioneer Park. Just making, just adding a really neat feature to, you know, pretty much desolate land that we had no use for at the time. I got to admit, when I first heard about the Utica Community Garden, I was skeptical. I said, hey, a lot of energy there, let's see what happens. And you've surprised me big time. I mean, I drive down there nearly every day and I'm impressed. There's something new almost every time I go down there, a new bench, a new raised bed, you know, new vegetables growing on the vine, it's an exciting place, so.
Got our first eggplant, little flowers today. And Mr. Lang said he's going to come show me how to do things, so.
If you come down to the DPW, I got a shovel with your name on it.
Several shovels there.
And our next appointment is our own Councilwoman Sherri Townsend. She also has taken a big interest in the Utica Community Garden, as well as helping us with some of our issues in our park, including the graffiti issue. And she requested to be added to the Parks and Rec. And so these are the two names I would be putting forth to council for a vote. I'd be looking for a motion to approve both ladies to be new members of our Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve both Lori Schmidt and Sherri Townsend to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Support.
Motion by Terencey, support by O'Donnell, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes. I mean, I vote for Lori.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to move on to council reports. I would remind everyone that you did have an assignment as a liaison for either a department, commission, or committee. So please include, if you do have any reports, feel free to give those to council. After we give the floor to Councilwoman Townsend to talk about the art fair.
Okay, so, we know we had the problem with graffiti. We thought that it would be a great mirroring together to have a kind of preliminary unveiling of our new mural, at the same time have live painting in the tunnel. So after talking to some of the artists, some of the young people, some of the art teachers, I did want to have some art displayed around the clock tower at the same time. But with COVID, the teachers didn't get physical artwork over the course of the last year and they didn't have any place to store anything. So in September, I would like to have a much scaled-down version of what my vision for the next couple of years would be. But my scaled-down version would be to have a tent while she's painting, because she's still going to be painting in September, and at the same time have some of the students from the local high schools, I know I have Utica and I have Eisenhower so far, to be live painting the graffiti in the tunnels. And if I could coordinate that, I mean, it's really not going to be, I'm really not going to have to have a lot of help, per se, besides just getting students there, doing it at the same time, and then maybe just some local advertising or something like that. But maybe next year, we can attack the Riverbend Tunnel and do the live painting and do something around the clock tower, you know, spread it out further. But just with COVID, the art teachers, and they're just starting out the school year, and I'm really dependent on them getting. But maybe next year, we can attack the Riverbend Tunnel and do the live painting and do something around the clock tower, you know, spread it out further, but just with COVID, the art teachers, and they're just starting out the school year, and I'm really dependent on them getting the students to be able to go in there and paint. So if we can just have some live painting, have area section off, try to save off some of the really good pieces that are in there, whitewash over, have students painting, and then we can do, you know, kind of a little fanfare for her mural, because she'll be live painting, as well as, you know, some of the students will be painting the mural too. My proposed date, after talking to all the teachers, was September eighteenth, and I'm looking for council to approve if I can put all this together to have those two kind of mini events going on. And I think if we have all these students together, along with the mural, I'm really hoping it'll catalyst towards preventing some of the stuff that we have in here now. So I don't know if we, you know, need to agree on that date or make a motion for that date, but...
I think we can make a motion to give you approval to do it, and you determine which date works based on the schedule of the mural and all the teachers that you're trying to coordinate.
Okay. Does anybody have any objections to me doing that? Okay.
Well, I'd be looking for a motion to authorize Councilwoman Townsend to organize the art fair, date to be determined, it would either be September eighteenth?
Eighteenth, yeah.
Or September twenty-fourth, it looks like.
Right, right, but evidently, there's a big art thing going on at DTE or something, the twenty-fifth, that following weekend, the following weekend would have given teachers a little bit more time, but there's a big art thing going on, so I don't want the kids to miss out on that and have to choose.
Well, I will make the motion to authorize you to organize the art fair.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Calendino, support by O'Donnell, any discussion by council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Sacora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne? Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you so much.
That'll be fun.
Do any other council members have any reports to present?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have two, well, I really have a question, I guess, number one, I had a medical appointment I couldn't move for planning last week, however, going forward, should be fine, so I did miss last week. My question is, for admin, which departments count, clerk, treasurer, this building, assessor?
All the above.
I mean, all the above, right?
Yeah.
All right, I think I'll reach out, I might want to, I'm taking PTO off of my day job, thinking I might reach out and ask on a couple of weeks from now to intern, I'll be an unpaid intern for you for a day, that's what I'm thinking.
You have plenty of work for you to do.
There's a lot of envelopes that need stuffing.
Sounds great, I can do that.
Anyone else from council? All right, at this time, I'd like to request a motion to authorize Chief Cody to join his crew in celebrating.
I got one real quick motion.
Oh, yes, what? Can we have a motion to move Chief Cody up on the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion. Support.
Motion by Mayor Protam-Sacora, support by Councilman Ryan, any discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Gosh, can't write that fast. Sacora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne? Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Chief?
Mayor and council, before you, we do have an Agenda Item Summary, this is a... an item that we spoke about during budget times, this is our police live scan fingerprint machine, as of December thirty-first, this will be coming obsolete and needs to be replaced and up and running by December thirty-first. Doesn't sound like a real big project, but the fingerprint machine is a machine in and unto itself that uses scanning properties to capture fingerprints of people for job applications, obviously suspects that we come in contact with, and all of this is run through a clemish system out of Oakland County. So we have to kind of move to exactly what they are asking for as far as computers, we have a booking computer, and the two computers talk to each other, the fingerprint computer and the booking computer. We account for this in budget, and we are waiting for it, our procrastination has kind of helped us a little bit, because right now, it's coming in a little bit under budget, so what we're asking for now is to utilize those funds that we have set aside to move forward and authorize the purchase of this equipment, so that we can make sure that we have things up and running before the end of the year. It's gonna include the new fingerprint machine as well as a laptop. There is a little bit of a change in some of the information that you have, after all of this was submitted, we got notification from Dell that that computer that we had requested had hit end of life, so we need to reconnect with Dell, find out where we're at with that, we don't anticipate there being much of a change in price, we did change it up a couple hundred dollars, just to make sure and accommodate any price increases, but the bids we had were literally less than thirty days old when we were notified by email after the paperwork was submitted, that that computer is no longer gonna be part of what's offered, so we're gonna be asking for you to have a motion to move forward to use the budgeted monies to complete the purchase of this instrument for the fingerprint live scan.
Chief Cody, be looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ryan?
Sacora.
Support by Mayor Protam-Sacora, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk?
Sacora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne? Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes.
Council, thank you.
Is that all, chief?
That is all I have for you today.
If council doesn't have anything for you, then go join your crew.
Okay, all right, all right, I appreciate everything today, obviously, a very special night for one of our officers, so thank you for your time and the praises afterwards, I'm sure this is a very special evening, so I'm sure if he hasn't, it's... his celebration is open to everybody, he's at Muldoon, so I hope to see you there.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, this may be one of the ladies I forgot to...
That's not a good thing, huh?
Couple with a little boy.
Stole my joke, I was about to say.
Goes with your shoes.
Okay. Looking for it, it will be at the police's apartment.
You don't wanna walk down the street with it.
Not in uniform, anyway.
Okay, moving on, assessing, we did discuss some tax tribunal settlements in closed session, we'd be looking for a motion from council to approve those settlements.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protam-Sacora, support by Councilwoman Trenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sacora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne? Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Nothing from building, library. Ms. Francis, how are you?
Good, just a couple things from the library, so July first, we opened like everybody else, well, the only thing that I think we weren't offering was people to be able to sit and stay, study, so that was something now that people were able to do, so that's been pretty popular now, I'm glad to see people coming back and enjoying it for long term, and then summer reading ended, we actually had a decent crowd, we had the one in-person program we did was overwhelming in a good way, we weren't expecting as many people as we got, and it made me feel like I was out of touch with it, it'd been like almost two years since we had in-person programming for summer readings, so it was a lot of work, I forgot about how much work it was, but it was good, we left feeling like we wish we'd have done some more in-person, but we didn't know where we were gonna be come summertime, and then, you know, the only other thing I wanted to bring up was, we have a lot of history next door, and I've been wanting for so long to digitize all of our stuff, but for us to get that done is way too expensive, so we're gonna do it ourselves, and we have a young lady, Julia, some of you might know her, she has since started working at the library, wants to go into libraries degree, and she wants to do archiving as a specialty, so what about our way to get her used to doing that, and she's gonna be digitizing all of our articles, our photographs, and all of the available on website, on our website, which some of it already is, so, yeah, so by the time she's done, she'll know more about the city of Utica than anyone else.
No kidding?
Yeah.
That's a big job.
There's a lot of stuff to go.
I'm thinking trivia challenge.
So, but that's gonna take a really long time, so she's working on it, but, you know, we're really excited about that, so, but that's it, that's going on this month.
Excellent, well, thank you. Chief Philsec, report from fire?
Yes, well, everything's going fine, as right as now, of course, COVID's on our eyes again, so be careful, but I'm again here before you for purchase of our two thousand and twenty Horton ambulance, I had approval for two hundred and thirty thousand, which was budgeted for, and I'm looking for a ambulance purchase for two thirty-six... two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, it would be installment loan proceeds one oh one, six five one, six nine seven, zero zero zero, and ambulance purchase, ledger account number one oh one, six five one, nine eight six, zero zero zero, which would require budget amendments for it, and the reason for the increase in the price is that we rolled in the warranty for the power load, which was quite expensive, so we figured just finance it all together.
Well worth it, though, well worth it.
Yeah, it saves our guys backs, and it's all electronic, so the warranties are a wonderful thing, so...
Chief, looking for that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Ryan, support by Councilman O'Donnell, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sacora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne? Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you, chief, anything else?
Yeah, that's it, like I said, the pancake breakfast, they'll be in the front driveway of the fire station, unfortunately, can't open our station up to the public, Michigan Department of Health has us still on lockdown, our guys love to wear masks in trucks and everything, so we will not be open to the public, trucks will be out in front with the compartment doors open, but nobody in the cabs, so just a little tidbit for everybody that wants to come out, so don't get mad at my guys, thanks.
Thanks, chief, and if... does council have anything further for fire chief, if not, I'd like to excuse him as well? Have a good night, chief.
Ambulance should be here, depending if we get funding or not, on fifteen, eleventh of September, I would think.
Excellent.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Louie.
Have a good night.
You too, chief. Mr. Lang?
Mayor and council, you have submitted to you a proposal from a bid tabulation to... for reconstruction of the Cass Avenue intersection at N fifty-nine and Auburn Road resurfacing, the mayor and I would apologize to you for not having it to you in advance, but the bids only came in and were read as of yesterday about two o'clock.
And the tabulation came in at one oh five this afternoon?
Today, right, so this is one of them times when we... where we'd like to apologize for a late submittal, we'd like to have your consideration tonight for the award of the bid, so that we can look to move forward and take advantage of a month instead of waiting till next month. So it basically what you have, we've got... we do have a low bidder on a project, there's a consideration for one project that you're aware of, and we took advantage of the existing project and added to the scope of it, kind of at the last minute, which the existing project was the reconstruction of Cass Avenue, where we've got it barricaded off in the locker room vicinity right there, but we also added the resurfacing of Auburn Road between Cass Avenue and Van Dyke, including the parking areas. That area was actually slated to be resurfaced in, and I think it was oh eight or thereabout, when we did Cass Avenue and Auburn, we got... we actually get federal aid funding for that project, Cass Avenue and Auburn Road, but they would not cover... the federal aid committee and the federal aid dollars would not... would not fund that portion of the project because of its precarious parking, they don't... the feds don't like to fund money that when you back into oncoming traffic, they... just something to do with road dollars, they don't... they wouldn't fund it, so we actually pulled that out, so that project should have been done maybe back in oh eight, and we've got an opportunity now to take care of that, I did take the liberty of having some pictures taken and forwarded to you, hopefully, you saw it, it's in pretty serious disrepair, so with that being said, it would be my recommendation to add it to the existing project, if we so chose to go forward with the Cass Avenue project as presented, now that being said, what we have in the bid tab was... I'm gonna look for it real quick, there's a lot in here, so the low bidder of the project was Anglin Civil at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and... two hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-one cents, they were the low bidders, I actually, we... I have... I and the engineers both have work experience with these folks, they actually did the Clinton River Restoration Project that was... we did in coordination with Sterling Heights and Utica, most of the work that was done, you didn't see, it was all, you know, shoreline restoration and work like that, but a good company and certainly able to do the project for us. Additionally, with the... with all the engineering costs and, let's see, it's laid out in here, oh, and their proposal, so on page three, labeled page one, is a bit of an account of what the total project would cost, if you look at the bottom of the page three in the packet, it would take a total cost of two hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents, as an estimate for the total cost of both projects, which would include everything that's presented here, that's... should be a total project cost with design engineering, construction engineering, the survey, the striping, and... With that being said, in order to have that done, we... it would require a budget amendment, currently, there's a hundred and ninety thousand budgeted, and it would require a budget amendment of a hundred... it's like a hundred thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, according to Mr. Paternoster, of which, I'm talking with the mayor, he would like to see that come out of the DDA access funds, or I'm not sure what the proper word is of those funds, now, with that, just a little tidbit, and it's only a couple of dollars, but it's still dollars, in talking with the Bike Path project, I think there were some DDA dollars that were offered as match for that project, yes?
For the Grand Park?
Yes.
That was Parks and Rec.
Where'd the... where'd the rest of it come from?
That was from DDA services.
Right, so, and that's where I'm going with that, we... I think we budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand total for that project, the bill came in today of ninety-six thousand, seventy-five dollars, so there's actually some of those DDA monies will come back to that fund, so if you were, you know, if Mr. Sacora was keeping track in his head of how much we were spending already, some of that... that's a compliment, by the way, some of that is coming... is expected to not be spent, so it would actually be back in that...
Yeah, we're gonna split that extra from the Grand Park walking path evenly between...
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec and back to the city, the DDA services.
So the good news there of the Parks and Rec project came in actually on budget, even though there was a fair amount of undercut and some armoring that needed to be done, undercut is when the soils are such that it really doesn't make for a good base, but they went ahead and took care of that for us, and we utilized materials that were there, and they had some excess, so we stayed on budget, kind of bittersweet, had I known, we could have probably pulled a couple more, you know, segments of asphalt out... segments of asphalt out, but you just, you don't know that. Celebrated as a win, we didn't spend as much, so that's good. So that, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking for. We would, I would need two things. We would, we would like to see an award of the bid to Anglin Civil in the amount of $255,178.21, so that we could get them started on the project, as well as we would like to see a budget amendment of $100,948 to the project as listed by Mr. Patenoster in the areas. On the second sheet for engineering, street maintenance, and sidewalks is where those funds need to be deposited to cover the projected costs. And if there's any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them.
Again, you have history with Anglin, because, I mean, the next closest bid is 15% more. And you've got bids that have come in, which a lot of people are, right now are putting bids out there that if you're dumb enough to take it, they'll gladly take your money. So when we come up with, you know, 255, let's say the base bid before the extra amount of paving, we go from $255,000 all the way up to $358,000.
And the next closest bidder, I think, is 305.
You have 293 plus.
293, but there's a fair amount of money left on the table.
Yeah, it's 15%. So, but you're, you have.
Just to give you an idea, just kind of, it's off-the-cuff background. Anglin Civil does a lot of, if not all of, the snow removal for Metro Airport.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I don't know if you're familiar with Metro Airport, but I'm talking actually to runways and the landing strips and that. You don't, I would not expect that a fly-by-night company could do that. Well, at least I hope. But that's, that is part of what they do, like in the off-season.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
I overlooked, Mr. Agusa, I believe we covered everything you need tonight as well, too. If there's no objections from council, I'd like to excuse Mr. Agusa. I apologize for...
No, no, thank you.
I think our city attorney's laptop kind of blocked the view there. I apologize. And same thing for Ms. Francis from library. Does council have anything more for her tonight? Thank you both.
Except now, Anglin's going to propose that the planes come in with the snowplow blade as they're coming down.
Right, right, right. Anyway.
They have snowplow blades in front of the planes, so.
Right. So, with that being said, especially like with the way the climate is now, actually, they're pretty fair and aggressive in their quote. It's a, you know, for us, where we're at, it's a, it's a good opportunity. Now, the Auburn, the Auburn resurfacing project, that's just what it sounds like. It's just a mill in a fill. It's basically a 10- to 15-year fix. We'll sit more on the 10-year. We do have some water main improvement that is scheduled for later down the road, and we would, in talking with the engineers, we'll just kick it down a little bit farther to coordinate with when that road will finally needs to be ripped out. Part of the reason we wouldn't do it now, one, the water system is not as flush as we'd like it to be, and two, there's actually a heavy concrete base underneath the existing road on Auburn. So it's not as easy as just ripping it out. There's more costing involved. So, and it's, I think it's... that part of the project is like an additional $25,000 to take care of that. We couldn't even begin to touch that if that was a standalone project for that kind of money. So, and it would, you can see it's definitely needs it.
And I think, you know, the important thing is that's really the gateway into our downtown, that whole corner. That, that street, you know, Auburn is getting much more traffic now since we did the traffic shift. People trying to get onto Van Dyke are cutting through, you know, it's a street. They're using that street much more than they were prior to the traffic shift. And we have some vacant, you know, pretty landmark businesses, you know, that are right there. You know, the Old Danny Jay's and the Hogs Hollow, that's still sitting empty. You know, if we ever want to stimulate business on that corner, we really need to do the best we can to make that corner look better. So, I mean, I think it's an important project. We would be looking for two motions tonight.